Good evening and welcome to the December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting. I hope everybody is in attendance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to all of our visitors and presenters. First up, we have our middle school update. We have two students joining us, David Dynan and Belizea. If you want to come forward, there's a microphone for each of you. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
It's been an exciting month at Wilmington Middle School with such more to come. Various clubs and organizations have been busy providing enrichment to our school community.
This month's Project Three Fifty-One held its annual food drive, and we are proud to announce that one thousand one hundred and twenty-one food items were collected and will be donated on behalf of Wilmington Middle School. This generous outpouring shows how much we have come together to support the Wilmington families and communities during these difficult times.
The Pop Prince Literary Magazine is collecting photography, art, and writing for their upcoming issue. All submissions are due by December sixteenth. We are excited to see what new issues we'll be bringing.
The World Culture Club has conducted a survey regarding cultural heritage, and over two hundred and sixty-four staff and students responded. The group voted to start by celebrating all things Irish. They will be celebrating with trivia, music games, and Irish step dance. All are welcome on Thursday, December sixteenth. This holiday season, we have been fortunate enough to bring back holiday concerts. It was such a great experience to see her performing arts live again. Congratulations to Strings Band and Chorus on outstanding performances.
Wilmington Middle School Student Council is excited to announce the December activities to help us get into the festive spirit. We will be having some holiday spirit days along with an old favorite, door decorating. This year, we will be using direct study time for door decorating. The doors will be voted by administration staff, and the winning classrooms will receive a trophy. This has been a fun team-building activity in the past, yet we must acknowledge that we have to do things a little different this year. It is very important that we practice social distancing while we are decorating our doors. We have added additional planning time to compensate for these changes.
This week is our holiday spirit week. We kicked it off today with holiday sock day. Tomorrow is holiday character day, and Friday is ugly sweater day. Next week on Wednesday, we'll be wearing holiday colors for door judging day.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Applause. Wait, don't go yet, though. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thank you for coming, though.
Thank you for coming. It sounds like an exciting place to be. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Kirk. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Ragstall.
All right. We have one person signed up for public comment, Jeffrey Cohen.
Jeffrey Cohen, eighteen Cobalt Street in Wilmington. Good evening. Why are masks mandates still in place when there's not one single prospective randomized controlled study, which is the gold standard, that proves that masks are effective against aerosolized viruses like COVID? If you really believe that masks are effective against these aerosolized pathogens, then you shouldn't be able to see your breath wearing a mask outside in a cold night, but you can. What you see is aerosolized water vapor escaping the mask. This cannot be prevented. Masks also concentrate droplets inside the mask, which are later aerosolized with potentially higher concentrations of contagions. For more definitive proof, Brown University was commissioned to analyze COVID mitigation strategies in public schools in the states of New York, Florida, and Massachusetts for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. Data was collected directly from the state education entity. In Massachusetts, data was provided by DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This was a large study that included over one point six million participants in three states. Mitigation strategies that were analyzed for the -- excuse me, the mitigation strategies were analyzed for their impact against the spread of COVID- nineteen and included in-person density levels, ventilation, and mandatory masking, which is most prevalent in New York and Massachusetts. I included links to all of these studies and where the data came from, including the DESI case count website. That's below. Here are a few highlights from this large study that I found fascinating. First, higher-density classrooms were consistently associated with lower student case rates in all three states. Student COVID- nineteen rates did not vary with mask mandates. This data came directly from DESI and other state agencies. It clearly shows that masks had no impact on COVID- nineteen cases among students. This alone should be sufficient to immediately eliminate mask mandates. This report goes on to say that there was very little variation across school -- excuse me, across schools in staff or student case rates across any of these mitigation strategies. So, none of these mitigation strategies, including student density, ventilation, or mask mandates, had any impact on student case rates. Since everyone knows -- or, excuse me, since everyone claims to follow the science, why hasn't anything been done to end all the mask mandates? Is this really about the science, or is it about something else? Thank you, and Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? And then, the committee also received two additional written comments, which we have read prior to the meeting.
Thank you so much. All right, item four, approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes, December first, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mrs. Plowman. All in favor? That's unanimous. We have warrants G eleven, R eleven, L thirty-three through forty, forty V point two, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-four, FS thirty-one through thirty-seven. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Smaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That's unanimous. Payroll ending twelve eight, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Fenely, thank you, seconded by Mrs. Plowman. All in favor? That is unanimous. And we have warrant sped ten. Mrs. Plowman, seconded by Mr. Ragstall. All in favor? And that is one abstention. All right. Item five, superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. There are a few items listed under number five with corresponding items that are included in the packet. I will note I am going to skip over or pass over item number B, Middle School Principal Reentry Plan, to be discussed at a later time. First, though otherwise, going in order, starting with the Department of Education Updates Around Student Health and Safety. A few items to bring to your attention in that of the communities tonight. First off, in the packet, I included a memo that recently was shared with all school staff in the district. As we have seen a rise in total COVID nineteen cases over a recent time period, we thought it incumbent to revisit our operational procedures and protocols and really trying to tighten up on a number of those areas. That's not to suggest that things had become loose or certainly not being followed. To the contrary, our staff and, quite frankly, all of our students in general are doing really a great job and have been doing so since the beginning of the year. But we recognize that with this uptick in cases, we want to ensure that the vigilance is in place, and so the memo, as you'll note, just outlines some of those adjustments or the return to some of the things that we had previously in place. I will share with you an update on the current vaccination rates as of yesterday throughout the district. This will be an item that will be added to the packet for those in the community that may wish to see this in print. At the first grade level, twenty-nine percent vaccination rate for our students. At the second grade level, thirty-six percent. At the third grade, twenty-eight percent. The fourth grade, thirty-two percent. The fifth grade, thirty-three percent. Sixth grade, twenty-seven percent. Middle school students, seventh and eighth grades specifically, forty percent. Our high school students, seventy-seven percent. And staff that we continue to track a little bit more closely at the middle school is eighty percent, and at the high school, seventy-seven percent. We're tracking this with the anticipation that at some point in time, although at a time still, quite frankly, yet to be determined by the Commissioner of Education, there may very well be the opportunity before, I would imagine, at the local level for this committee to, in conjunction with the Board of Health, to entertain any adjustments to the masking protocol. I will say on a final note that there was a call earlier today with the Commissioner of Education, and he made it very clear that there won't be anything forthcoming in terms of any new information around masking modifications until the new year. So, we originally anticipated that something might have been pushed forth by the Department of Ed prior to the winter break. That is clearly not the case. So, I'll certainly keep you informed as any new information becomes known there. I'll pause on that item in case there are any questions from the committee. Okay. Skipping over item B, as mentioned, and we'll go to administrative searches and an update on that. In your packet, there is an item of overview for two newer developments that we are, as a district now, pursuing, and that has to do with administrative searches. We have -- just give me a moment here, sorry. Item five, F in the packet. We've had two recent developments that I take this opportunity to share with the committee and, of course, the community at large, because this is timely for us as a district and school community moving forward. And so, I want to take this opportunity to share this with you. The respective communities of which I'm speaking of both have been informed of this, that is, the parent guardians and our staff, but to use this opportunity to announce more broadly to the community at large. First off, Wilmington High School, timely as it is this evening, but in just a few minutes, we will have Ms. Peters, who will be part of a presentation before the committee around the high school, and a review of that project work to date, but is with a degree of sadness and disbelief, I suppose, to a degree that Ms. Peters has announced to the high school community that she intends to retire at the end of the current school year. So, well, that is obviously disheartening for us to lose such a tremendous and longstanding leader in the district. We obviously have the obligation for our students and staff to move forward, and time is really of the essence, honestly, as it relates to leadership searches. And so, as outlined in the memo, a little bit more extensively of what that timeline looks like as we seek to set out on a search for Ms. Peters and her successor, and that information is included in the memo and subsequently attached to that, a little bit of more information that will be shared with the community at large. Another administrative search that we are setting out is at the Wildwood School. Ms. King, previously the principal at that school, did provide her resignation to the district recently, and as such, we are commencing a search for her successor as well. We are going to also kick that off, and in fact, it really began last week, and you can see the timeline there that's anticipated. We'll flex these dates as necessary, whether that be for snow dates or anything else for that matter, but it is the time right now for leadership searches, and we want to be a leader, so to speak, in the field and to try and attract the most highly qualified candidates we can for both of these searches. And, of course, there's opportunities outlined in terms of the chance for members of our community to get involved with both of those searches. Much more to come in the coming weeks and the coming months. And finally, another item that's not outlined in the packet but to bring attention to has to do with a recent event that a few of us here attended the other night at the town, and that has to do with the recent -- hold on, sorry.
What are you looking for?
I'm sorry.
What are you looking for?
The Collier proclamation.
Do you have the radar?
No, I have it here. The other evening, with the Board of Selectmen in Wilmington, it was a pleasure to be a part of the ceremony along with Ms. Burns and Dr. Brison, who we attended a selectmen meeting. And the selectmen passed and put into place through their collective vote to acknowledge the Sean Allen Collier Day in Wilmington on January third. Just for those that may not exactly know that name, although, as I've come to learn, many in the town of Wilmington, the community of Wilmington, do. Sean Allen Collier was a graduate of this school system, this school, and still has close family connections, including his mother and stepfather here in town. Sean died in the line of service, serving for the Massachusetts Institute of Technology Police Department on January ninth, two thousand and twelve. You certainly may recall undoubtedly that that was connected to the very tragic events of the Boston Marathon bombings. He was killed in action, and there had been a number of different outlets for the recognition and remembrance of his service and his commitment to policing and to his communities that he served, and that was extended with the proclamation that took place the other night. A wonderful ceremony, certainly fitting for a hero, and this certainly will bring attention on an annual basis. As far as the school system goes, we'll give some consideration to how we can support and participate in the recognition of his service on January third, which this year falls on a Monday, I believe. And with that, that concludes the superintendent report tonight.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Just saying that the -- and forgive me for being so detail-oriented. I believe the Marathon bombing was April thirteenth of --
He lost his life April eighteenth.
Sorry?
April eighteenth.
Thank you. Oh, that's right. I forgot the -- forgive me. My apologies.
No, just asking. Thank you for making that question. Other comments or questions?
I would -- it was a really beautiful ceremony at the Select Board Meeting Monday night. I would definitely encourage all of you in the public to watch that. It's right at the very beginning. It was filled with law enforcement, both local and also from MIT and from Somerville, where Sean was a teacher there as well. So, his family was there, and many people spoke. It was quite moving. So, I would definitely encourage everyone to watch that, and we said on our way out, and Ms. Peters was there as well, and we said we will definitely be doing something on January third to honor and celebrate Sean and his legacy. So, that is that. And I did want to just extend a thank you to Greg Van Doren for inviting us and, you know, making sure that we were a part of it.
Facilitating that as well.
And facilitating.
Fabulous.
He didn't ask for that. So, he did want to be here tonight. He's not able to, but he did want me to extend his gratitude and thanks to the school committee for being present at that event as well.
All right. No other comments or questions? But I also -- I'm sorry, I have one more. Do I raise my hand? I always get very confused in this part. I think that the administrative searches, the high school presentation looks really great and strong, and I was excited to see how that came together pretty quickly, and I think it will hopefully attract someone to sit over for Ms. Linda Peters, which will be an impossible task, but, you know, at least we have the right stuff in place to find someone. So, and in that, please, thank you. Of course, we have many, many months to say our thank yous, but it's hard to announce your retirement without saying a huge thank you. So, thank you, and great that you're here tonight. We appreciate it. All right. Our next item of business is Ms. Linda Peters, actually. We have the Wilmington High School Graduation Update of Findings, and there's a whole bunch of people here, and teachers and curriculum team leaders, and so I'm imagining this is not going to be a solo event, but maybe it is. I don't know.
If I may, as Linda comes forward, and thank you for everyone for being here, our instructional leaders, not the least of which, obviously, is Ms. Peters, and I know that Ms. Elliott will probably chime in here as well, too. Just as sort of a point of context here for this item and why it's here, in case members of the community are wondering, this actually is closely connected to one of the goals that I brought before you as a committee previously, earlier this year, one of the superintendent goals. And specifically, it was around District Improvement Goal Number One, Wilmington High School Program Review. Just very briefly, as context setting, there's a couple of reasons why it seemed like it was an opportune time to embark upon this work. First off, the recent development of the Wilmington High School Vision of a Graduate. As you know, that's been a part of the ongoing NEASC work that the high school, under Ms. Peters' leadership, has been continually involved with even during the pandemic. And I just, I think that that's really important to point out. It's work that started prior to the pandemic. It's work that continued through it and has really culminated in the last number of weeks, as you know, with a recent visit. So, from that standpoint alone, it seemed like an opportune time to take a pause and examine our program of studies and our requirements for our graduates to that of other school systems, but also to that of our vision of a graduate, to make sure that there was strong alignment for what we want to provide and have our students experience when they pass through these doors and over the course of their four years. So, that's the backdrop for this, and this, after a lot of really hard and collective work, not just by our leadership who are in this room, but also by their colleagues who they work closely with and represent, this is the first glimpse, if you will, tonight at the work that they have focused in on, to be followed, as you'll hear in a few moments at a later date, around some recommendations that come after their review. So, with that, Ms. Peters, thanks.
Actually, I will start with the first couple of slides, and then we will invite our CTOs and liaisons, ones who will get to your department, to come forward to share your slides as well. But I wanted to just give a little insight into what this work, how this work began and what we focused on. So, back in October, on the ten twenty-seven CIT Day, the high school departments, led by CTOs and liaisons, really engaged in research, if you will, around looking at about thirty other communities and taking a deep dive into their program of studies and into some data around their schools as well. And the communities selected to look at were sort of a group that was partially from radar districts, districts that surround us, so lots of different school districts that we tend to compare ourselves to, and, as you know, radar districts can change from year to year, so we really just looked at historically those that we've been compared to over time. So, that's really where the list came from, as well as some communities that, you know, are always those that we, you know, would love to have the same source of revenue and all of those, that we can see what are they doing as well from those different. So, each district, I mean, each department went through and started to look at student enrollment, student-teacher ratios, the number of classes for each student in their school system. That might vary. And any graduation requirements that are specific to the department, as well as school-wide graduation requirements. And they went through the program of studies and then looked with, from their own department lens, you know, what is it that they are offering? How does it compare to what we offer here in Wilmington? And they really did side by side, you know, capturing information of anything that might have been unique or different that they saw in some of these other districts. So, if you wouldn't mind clicking to the next slide. Thank you. So, on this slide, you'll see there, these are each a link to, it's just a spreadsheet that the team, so it's rough, it's not fancy. It's where they captured their notes from each department about what they observed from each of the different communities that they were looking at and the information they were gathering. So, that's there for folks if they wanted to get an insight as to which districts they looked at and what they found. But today, they will report out sort of an overview of each of this information as well, once we get to that part of the presentation. I'll turn it over to Linda, who will talk a little bit about some historical information.
Thank you. And before I begin, I just want to say that I owe Wilmington truly a huge debt of gratitude for taking me in when I was a little younger and for giving me the opportunity to teach, which I love, and to lead, and I will miss it. Thank you. We did some research on the programs that we offered, from FY eleven through FY twenty-two, and the things that have changed over the ten years have been really the number of teachers in some departments, which impacts the number of sections of courses that we offer in those departments. And in both the English and math departments, we did reduce from ten point six teachers to nine point six teachers over the ten years, which went from fifty-three sections to forty-eight sections. That's five sections per teacher for full-time and then point six for three sections. For science, we include technology with science, so we do have a staff of nine point six science teachers and one technology teacher, and that we have not changed in the ten years. We have changed many of the electives and added some AP courses over the year in the science department to remain current. In social studies, we have not changed in terms of the number of teachers or also in the number of sections. And the social studies curriculum offers a lot more than history courses. It's where students can explore other fields like psychology, sociology, economics, criminal justice, and a number of other offerings in terms of electives. So, it really encompasses quite a bit in terms of a curriculum. In the business department, we reduced by one teacher over the ten years, physical education by one teacher. In world languages, we had seven teachers in a CTO that reduced to seven point two with six teachers, actually, and one teacher at a point six and also the CTO. The offerings have been three to four languages over the ten years. Adding Latin, we did add Latin several years ago. We do still offer it. We run it when there's an enrollment. In visual arts, we've had no changes. We do have four areas in the visual arts. We have ceramics, we have art, we have photography, and we have graphic design, and that's one teacher per each of those areas. The first apartment that we'll present is the English department, and Ms. Parvayanen could not be with us tonight, so I'm going to present for her. What they found when they did their review of the thirty or so districts is that all districts have a four-year requirement in English, and the pathway to fill the four-year requirement changes from district to district. Many of the first three years of English is much the same in terms of curriculum and in terms of courses, and what they see is that the senior year is where they see a lot of differences in the programs in all of the districts. And senior seminars was one thing that they noticed was quite popular, where they had a lot of different opportunities for seniors, different options for seniors in the senior year for their senior English course. They do offer some electives in the English department as well. The four years is comparable to all districts in terms of graduation requirements. The other graduation requirement for English in overall is obviously meeting the MCAS CD standard in English. Those are the standards as of right now that will change or be updated for the class of two thousand and twenty-six. So, our next department is mathematics, and Mrs. Valut will present.
Hello. Hi. Welcome. Thank you. So, in comparing Wilmington's mathematics offerings to the thirty other districts that we looked at, we were pretty comparable in terms of the selection of courses that we offer, mainly being Algebra One, Algebra Two, geometry, pre-calculus, calculus. We did note that most other districts around offer at least two levels of Algebra One, where we only offer one. Granted, we do offer more of an honors-level course at the middle school, but at the high school level in other districts, there does tend to be two or more. I think we saw up to five in some districts, different levels of Algebra One. A really big difference that we did notice is that most districts are offering a computer programming or computer science courses, almost like a mini-major pathway that they can follow. Now, in years past, I know Mary Sullivan had taught AP Computer Science Principles. This year, we have students taking it through virtual high school. But something that we thought that we should look into in the future is either hiring somebody for this or offering more of those computer programming courses in our district. It's a really popular topic, you know, with It's a really popular topic, you know, we've got students who go to MCC to do those types of courses because we don't have them here. And I think if we want to attract more students to the high school, that's definitely an area that we should look into. Something else of note is that a lot of other districts offer MCAS and SAT prep courses, some during the day, some after school. And then, so taking a look at our graduation requirements, Wilmington High School requires four courses to be taken, one per year, which is in line with the requirement for most Massachusetts state colleges. The average over the 30 towns was 3.6 years. I think only nine of the 30 had a three-year requirement instead of a four. Some other district requirements, like outside of Wilmington, is that some districts require that Algebra I be taken in district. We have had a history of some students taking it outside, whether that be at Russian Math or through the virtual high school to try and jump up between middle school and high school. And some districts do require that it be taken in district. And then in terms of MCAS requirements, so class of 2022, in order to meet the requirement on MCAS is a 469. However, I do know in April, the commissioner and the board decided to, that you could waive that for the class of 2022 in lieu of meeting the standard within the certified class within the district. Students can still take it for scholarship purposes. And for classes 2023 through 2025, the score's going to jump up to 486 and above for graduation requirements. Any questions? Yeah?
I'm just going to take a brief. Okay. We are back, sorry about that. Mrs. Clomman, you had a question?
I did have a question. I do remember. So there's a bit of a jump in the MCAS requirement. When they return to the 486 requirement, is that returning to pre-COVID standard or is that a higher requirement? Do we know? What was it before 2022?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head.
That's okay.
I do know that, that same group.
I can jump in here if you, if you want. The, so even though the next generation MCAS is on a different scale, for several years now, the 10th grade classes have only had to meet the equivalent of the proficiency standard, or sometimes in some cases, the needs improvement standard on the former scale. And that was extended to the class of 25. So they, you know, they've extended that a couple more years. So they, at that point, they have a couple years basically now to reset the competency determination, to find a new cut score on the, you know, if they choose a new cut score. But for right now, it's essentially statistically the equivalent of what the standard has always been, so that there's been no change in the competency level standard for graduating. And that was extended at the, you know, recently at the board level up to the class of 2025.
If I'm not mistaken, that same group, if they score, what do I have, between 455 and 471, they can complete a proficiency plan instead to, to still meet the competency requirements.
Right, there, because there's, there's a, there's a clean passing level at which you're done, and then there's a level at which you need what's called an EPP, an educational proficiency plan, and in order to graduate. Both, both of those were set statistically equivalent to what the old MCAS was, the 220 and the 240 level from the old MCAS.
I was just curious, you had touched upon the Algebra I and how some districts have multiple Algebra I classes, up to five in some districts. Were the districts comparable in enrollment sizes? Ours, were they larger, smaller? I just find that, you know, staffing and then student ratio, I just didn't.
Some of them were comparable, some of them were quite different. I know that the tech is just one that comes off the, to the top of my mind, is one that has, I think they've got four or five different levels.
Okay.
And so we've talked about ways to do that without separating out students who struggle more with the learning, because we want to put everyone together, because everyone can learn from each other.
Right.
So we, we have a couple of ideas to how we want to go forward with that.
And still remain challenging for the different
Yes.
levels within that one? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a question so much, it's just I'm, I'm glad to see us moving forward on something for computer science and computer programming, because I think that that's the, the only hole that I've seen in our overall program of studies over the past several years, is that, that that's a very popular subject and, and that, you know, we didn't have it, and I'm glad that we're looking, looking more seriously into offering that. Offering that again, you know, in-house rather than the options that we've been able to provide so far. I don't know if it's a math issue, so I guess there's just no better place to put it.
Yeah, it's in, in many of the districts, it was, it was put into the mathematics department. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cam is up. About the science department?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So when we did our program analysis, we noticed that Wilmington was only one of two schools that had distinct paths for the ninth grade students in science. That was very interesting. I noticed that a few years, like six years back when I came, but now we have a little bit more data. If you take a look at the other schools, most of them take biology as freshmen, and then some take physical science or conceptual science course. And then a small portion take either earth science or two years of bio or an environmental science and then bio. Or, yeah, I said earth science. And then one, like us, has a very confusing path. And I actually talked to that teacher, because she actually works here now, so, so that was interesting. If you look at our next slide, where we talk about our graduation requirements, it looks like we're kind of with the majority of schools that we have three years of science with the 23 other schools. And then two schools have less than three years, and then six have more than three years, either three and a half or four years of science. In all the districts, students must pass one science MCAS, and so we also, so, but they could take it either in biology or intro physics. And I think also a handful of districts have them take the biology as a sophomore instead of as a freshman. But we like to kind of spread out the load of testing so that we give it to our freshmen first, and then they have ELA in math sophomore year. I think that's it. Yeah, questions?
So I was curious, knowing that the STEM fields are still, I mean, I think that those driving factors before the pandemic now kind of, we're just trying to get back on bottom, back to gaining our, you know, gaining ground. How would, would you make any recommendations with what you oversee as to what you, you would like to see perhaps expanded within the science, whether, you know, it may not be in the immediate future, but maybe a pathway down the road as to what you might suggest or recommend from seeing other school programs and offerings that could be beneficial for students here?
I do. We have a lot of recommendations, but you're going to have to wait till January. I knew that was coming there.
You know me, I'm the kind of, I'm the worst kind of gal.
And if you notice, like in Linda's slides.
I know.
You just have to wait until January. But we have added several science courses, two of them being AP science courses. So AP chemistry was added two years, so eight years ago, and then we added AP physics, I want to say, seven years ago.
Okay.
And so we are relevant in terms of our courses. We also added an astronomy class.
Oh, nice.
We also are in the works of adding a couple new courses. I can't tell you yet, though.
All right, I'm so sorry. All right.
Any other questions?
I'll be waiting with, you know.
I know, well, you can't skip the next meeting then.
I know, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So I think at one point I heard you say that our, our current two-track science is confusing, so this, this may fall into a wait till January.
That is another wait till January. I'm just presenting, we wanted to give you so much more information, but then we decided to kind of parse it out into two components so that you can just ponder. I wonder what Julie's going to say next.
Something to reflect on over the holidays.
Up with their own hypotheses.
Oh, I like the science word, too.
What science courses do I want Santa to bring me this year?
I'll get you a Chia Pet.
I, I actually did have a, another quick line of questions, short though. What's our ratio of students who take biology MCAS to physics MCAS?
I know that we have probably about four sections, so I want to say about maybe almost 50%.
This past year was 50% physical science.
Okay, so we're about half and half.
Yes, yes.
Half the freshmen taking, taking the biology MCAS and half taking intro physics. And do most of them pass freshman year? How many of them need to approximately retake it in, as sophomores?
So this past year, 100% of our biology students passed, and then we had a handful that did not pass in physical science, but a small percentage.
Very small percentage.
And does anyone typically take the February biology test?
We do. So we're actually in conversation about that, like who would need to take that. Many of them are students that have transferred in from other schools that didn't take it, or they were not successful the first time, and so we're talking about, you know, do we want to offer them like two opportunities? The only retest available in February is biology, so that's why I think many of the school districts choose to have that. So there's almost three opportunities for them to take the test by the end of their sophomore year.
Until next year, getting February physics.
Right, so.
Coming, coming, coming next year. Lastly, do any of our students need to take chemistry or the technology engineering test in order to?
So in the past few years, we've had, I think, one or two technology students. And then this year, we're talking about whether or not we have this transfer student take chem or bio, so, like, singletons in terms of the number of students.
I'm asking since those tests are most likely going away and will, just was, was curious how, how much need there was for them, for people who.
Right, because most of the students find success in either the biology or the physical science, so it's almost redundant. But yet, there's always those extenuating circumstances where students have transferred in or come from other places, where they need to take an assessment.
Right, and science is a little different from ELA and math, because you continue taking those subjects year after year. So you're, you know, even if you don't pass the first time, you're usually still in a good place, you've been getting instruction in the subjects. And, you know, once you take a subject-specific science, you're not going to.
Right, it's very content-specific.
You're not going to come back, you're not going to come back to that.
Right, so if you're in a bio class, you would not be prepared for the physics or the chem exam, definitely.
Thank you.
Not until January.
Thank you.
Have a lot of them by then. Thank you.
We have social studies with Mrs. Gaff.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening.
Similar to what my other colleagues have said, we took a look as a social studies department to survey comparable high schools. Okay, so we looked at comparing our, our school to other schools. The pathways were very similar in three- or four-year requirements for social studies, either college prep courses, honors courses, or advanced placement courses. Where schools differed was the pathways of getting those three or four years with the new standards. It's mapped out for four years. Schools have decided either, for the most part, to stay the way they are, either two years of US history and a year of world history, or two years of world history and a year of US history. We here at the high school are very unique, and we were working on curriculum. We have it in place for our freshman and sophomore years, but our junior year we're working on right now. And we've combined it into a global approach, combining the US and world history. And so we are very unique in that area, I guess, when we compare it. The other area that I think we looked at was electives, and we offer a great deal of electives here at the high school, for a school our size especially. The number of students that are enrolled in those electives, our juniors and seniors are all in at least one elective, if not two, which I'm very proud of our department for doing. As far as graduation requirements, currently we were a three-year social studies graduation requirement, which again is very comparable to other districts. When we looked at the 30 districts, 25 of them were three years and five of them were for four years. One of the things we are looking at is the requirement for both middle school and high school levels to have civics projects, and that is something we're currently working on. And the new social studies standards are presented in a four-year sequence, so we're going to have to look to see if we're going to move on that three to four benchmark. Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
So you mentioned that we are an outlier in our approach, or sort of our combination of, of a, you know, global and US.
Yes.
That we, that we take a more sort of combined holistic approach rather than separating them. Again, I know more detail on January 19th. How, but, but more broadly, how, like in areas where we find that we're a bit of an outlier from what other districts do, and maybe Linda, this is something you can speak to as well, how are we thinking about evaluating what we're doing versus other places? I mean, what we're doing might be really good, and there's no reason that we need to follow other people just because they're doing it. We might think actually we have good reasons for doing it the way we do. But on the other hand, maybe there are good reasons why no one else is doing it either. So I'm just curious, like, how you think about evaluating that?
So the mindset going into this was that we've offered, again, that US, over the years of teaching here, 21, I think it is, we've shifted depending on state testing and the frameworks, which are now standards. And like I said, other districts have gone with two years of US or two years of world. We had prior to, two years of US and a year of world. One of the things for our reasoning is we were almost duplicating subject matter in, from a world perspective and a US perspective. In simple terms, we were trying to kind of combine that, when we're talking about, for instance, World War I and US history, and then we're repeating it again in world history from a different perspective, we're trying to get more of a global approach and kind of get further along the curriculum. And one of the things, again, very basic, not to get too deep into this, but the idea is that history continues, and the timeframe that we're able to teach it really hasn't. So one of the strong parts that we thought we could do is basically take that overlap and make it look at it in a global perspective. And in addition, we thought it was best for our students to look at the timeframes and see what else to make those connections in the curriculum versus handling it at one point in one year, then handling it again in another year. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, and I, I think it mostly sounds like that we feel we have pretty good reasons for why we made the choices that we made and.
Yeah, and in my years, in, in this position, I've talked to other districts, and, and a lot of people like the idea, just don't want to, I don't want to, it's a lot of work. Other questions? Thank you very much.
So for world languages, Mr. Brown was not able to be here tonight, so I will review his information. It looks like that most districts offer four or more language tracks, levels one through five. We offer three languages right now, sometimes four when we offer Latin. But we offer it, not one through five, we actually offer two through five for Italian and French and one through five for Spanish. We also offer an opportunity for the SEAL of Bilingual literacy. Our district, in our district right now, that is not in the budget for this year to pay for the SEAL test, testing, but we did put it in the budget for next year. Our students pay for the assessments, not all students are required to take it. They, I know the foreign language, or the world language department is working on curriculum based on the new world language frameworks, which came out in 2020. Also, as far as graduation requirements, Wilmington is one of very few districts that currently does not have a world language graduation requirement. It is highly recommended that two years of consecutive language for colleges is required. So our students do take two years of a language. We strongly recommend three. And our enrollment numbers apparently seem to be comparable to districts that have a two-year requirement. I think he has in that chart, you can see how many students, and this is based on this year's numbers, ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders continue in languages. I don't know if I could answer too many questions.
I do have one that you might, I wouldn't exactly expect something more, I guess I'm looking for something more speculative. Those children who may have a learning disability of sorts. Those children who may have a learning disability of sorts, who would be college bound or preparing for college readiness, what, would there be other pathways to meet, I guess, if this does become a graduation requirement, to meet that? I'm just saying, I'm not, you know, looking for the direct answer, but would there be a pathway? Because I would.
I think there would have to be some introductory or some different approach to language in some courses for some students. I think that that has to be considered. You know, there are students that go to college that have disabilities, and they are taking languages now. But I do think there will have to be even more consideration. If it becomes a graduation requirement, that's for everyone, and not everyone is going to college. So I do think that there has to be some sort of.
Alternative pathway perhaps?
Yeah, alternative, a language course, but some, something alternative that is not as academic, I would say, as some of the language courses that are offered now.
Thank you.
So, so we don't require the two years of language that some other schools do. Do you know what percentage of our students are still taking two years of world language?
Yes, it looks like, according to the chart here, that Mr. Brown presented, 95% of our ninth graders take a language and 86% of our 10th graders take a language. So over the two years, it's a high percentage of students that are taking languages. It's not 100%. Okay, thanks. Our next is business, family, and consumer science. Assistant principal, who also serves as the curriculum team leader for those departments, Mr. Phillips.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
You're welcome.
Good. So I'm the, one of my jobs is the de facto department head, if you will, for the business and family consumer science departments. And it's a unique experience because it is two completely separate, obviously there's a lot of overlap, but it is two unique departments. And so over time, we've developed a lot together, but there still are some separations we have. As you can see from the slide there, there are some pretty broad-ranging comparisons. It would be impossible to enumerate all of the comparisons between every school because a lot of schools offer, you know, introduction to business, for example. A lot of schools offer some sort of personal finance course, but we're one of the few that has a service learning class. We're one of the few that has a international business class, for example. So some highlights of some differences, though, is, for example, is there are a lot of business pathway-type courses to certification. Certifications like Google certifications, Microsoft certifications. The idea being that, you know, walk out of there with something beyond just, you know, the practice of learning accounting, but actually being able to gather some, a piece of paper that will help you get a job going forward. And one example that we used specifically was the tech to talk about the idea that, that obviously that's some place that there's their business and technology shop, if you will. And what you'll see is that we have a comparable program, at least the first year program, the first couple of years that a student is in the business and technology shop, they take similar courses to what we have to offer. The personal finance, introduction to business, we have courses in accounting, courses in marketing and advertising. We have all those similar, very similar courses. Likewise, in family and consumer science, there are very few schools that offer any comparable family and consumer science programs. There are some that have some sort of independent living course, you know, balancing a checkbook, something like that, buying insurance. And there are a few that have more specific culinary and cooking-related courses, but nothing that is really at all comparable to what we have here. Go ahead. As you know, our graduation requirement now is that every student take a personal finance course, managing your money. And that is a one semester course, and all grade levels take it. Typically, the counselors know to get those graduation requirements in early, so they're younger when they take it. Typically, freshmen, sophomore, but we do have seniors that take them on a fairly regular basis. And you'll note, I made some notes in terms of, just say in general, the business courses and the family and consumer science courses are very popular among our student body here. We have, as you'll know, this past year, nearly 75 sections worth of requests for business courses, and we've managed to offer a total of 40 sections. So as you can see, there's a very high interest in business and family and consumer science. And every single one of these courses, pretty much every single one of these courses, is filled to capacity. And what's unique about this program is, again, the family and consumer science courses offer a transitional program for students who are not, non-traditionally off to a four-year college or even a two-year college, opportunities to learn practical skills that then they can use in other fields. And then it's been around for a few years since prior to COVID. It kind of is on hold now, but the state legislature is looking to make it a state requirement that students take a personal finance course. I don't know that there's any clear awareness of where that is right now because it has been kind of bouncing around for so long, I don't know if it's exactly up in the front of anybody's mind, but it is out there. Any questions?
Got a question so much as a comment, and I think I've said this in the past, but I think it's great that we require the personal finance class. Admittedly, I wish I had something similar when I was in high school.
Agreed.
I might have made better decisions in my younger days. But I think it's wonderful, and I'm glad to see it, so thank you.
Very much, thank you. All right, thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Next is the visual arts program, and Miss Tynan is not here, so I will go over her information. So it seems that the program that we offer here is comparable to most other districts. She has indicated that some districts separate drawing and painting courses. They combine 3D courses into sculpture and ceramics. Some districts, and we have not done this, I don't recall in my tenure, offer a full year art courses. All our art courses are semester courses. We do have full-year graphic design courses. But all photography, all art, all ceramics are semester courses, so that we can offer a lot of sections. They are, we do offer the first and second year, and we do have advanced third-year courses. It looks like some schools also have offered more humanities-based art electives, such as the art of kindness, artist therapy, art ideas. So it looks like that they are looking at some of these as different ideas, maybe different ways to incorporate art into the curriculum. Almost all schools have AP two-dimensional design and AP three-dimensional design courses. I'm not exactly sure I know what those are. We do not offer them at Wilmington High School. I know that they have, the art department has been looking into offering some AP art courses. Most schools require one year of arts elective, which includes visual and performing arts. Some have general elective credits, 25 to 30 credits a requirement, such as we have. We have requirements for credits, and it can be in a variety of different subjects. It doesn't have to come from visual or performing arts, can cover business, family, and consumer science. And we offer so many electives in all our major courses. I will try to answer some questions.
I just have a comment. I think going forth, I would like to see expansion of programming within this department. I think it does fall, in my opinion, under the STEM banner. And I think getting students ready for their future and what those jobs look like and going through a pandemic and technology being such a huge piece to that, I think the more that we can try to expand upon course offerings within our abilities to make them diverse and to kind of keep in line, I guess, with how technology in itself is continuing to evolve, I would, I would think that this is also like a main area to kind of, just, you know, just as important as the sciences and, you know, you know, those other cores, that we need to not wait too long to expand upon or, and/or revise in order to meet the growing demands of the world and what business.
Yeah, we could update in this area, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, performing arts department, Mr. Oliver will present.
He got loud people for me. It's his band on it. Good evening. So we found out when we did all of this research that Wilmington High School matched, or was comparable, to about 50% of the schools that we looked at in terms of our performance-based ensembles, band, chorus, string orchestra, jazz band. We also matched for some non-performance-based electives like music theory, intro to theater, and our history, our survey courses, history of pop music, rock music. We did discover that it was typical for the schools that we reviewed for them to offer 16 average, on average. I think the highest number was 35, the lowest number of musical electives was six. Right now, we offer eight, four of them being performance-based classes, four of them being survey courses. Our ability to be able to offer more electives is really based on our faculty. We have three staff members here at the high school, none of whom are full-time at the high school. They're split between the high school and the middle school, or in the case of our incredible strings teacher, between the high school, the middle school, and two intermediate schools. So that impacts our ability to be able to offer a wide number of electives. So 22 out of 29 of the schools reviewed did require performing and fine arts requirements or a combination of performing and fine arts requirements mixed with other electives. Right now, Wilmington High School does not have a specific fine and performing arts requirement, but at one time we did. We're still not sure when that was, but I do remember it. We're still digging through the boxes in the basement, trying to find out when that changed. And we would like to, as a performing arts faculty, recommend reinstating that because, as I included, from the mass arts curriculum framework, all Massachusetts students will develop artistic literacy through active participation in the arts, expressing creative ideas with skill, confidence, and artistic intent. The end.
Mrs. Byrne?
I would very much support that requirement coming back myself, in knowing the importance of the arts with BFA and, no, medical secretary, but still, I think it is, it's just, it broadens one's perspective of the world in so many different modalities that, well, huge supporter, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
So the first, your first, I was going to say bullet, your first clef says that we matched about 50% of the schools with the, basically the ensembles. So what kind of, for the schools that we didn't match with, I'm assuming they offered some additional performance, you know, opportunities that we, that we did beyond like our strings and our.
Actually, interesting observation, no, the other 50% didn't meet our standard. They didn't offer all of them. I know some time ago, it was, it was only about a third of districts in all of Massachusetts that offered comprehensive performance-based classes in band, orchestra, and chorus. So I was impressed that 50% of the schools we surveyed, not a third, met that, but the other 50% did not.
Okay, that's, all right, I was curious about that because I couldn't really think of it. How many more things can?
Well, I mean, to be clear, again, when you fall out of performance-based and you go to non-performance or survey courses, a lot of schools offer things like sound recording, sound engineering, all kinds of technology courses that we'd love to be able to offer. We just, we don't have, we can't spread us any thinner. I mean, me, yes, but the rest of the staff, we can't spread any thinner.
Just I have one quick question about the staffing. And so now, having been a parent who's had children move through some of these levels, it is sort of, you're stricken by the fact that there are so few people doing so much of this great work. And so we've all just been through these concerts, and it's, it is unbelievable that there is really just one strings teacher. And probably for us as a dis, not, not a good fit, right? So it's like you kind of don't realize it when you're in the fourth and fifth grade, but then you start to go through and you're like, oh my goodness, I can't believe there's this one person doing all of this. And so I would definitely encourage my colleagues to look more deeply at that and to make sure that, we say we're standing behind this, and we need to provide that support to make sure that it is not one individual running to, I would imagine, sometimes one to four schools, maybe?
Yes, that is correct.
In a day?
Not in a day.
Thank goodness.
We're a little more humane than that.
But still, that is pretty, that's pretty unreal. And I wonder if we were to do a staff, like look at staff at some of those other districts? I'm curious to know, maybe that was done.
That's true.
How much staff there is at some of these other schools that have these thriving music and art programs? Are they double, are they triple? I would just love to know some of that as we start to look through and start to plan ahead, obviously, in the future budget years.
That can be definitely something else we look into.
Great. And of course, to just applaud, I mean, the work that you all do and your leadership is just tremendous, and so we are grateful.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
For our health and physical education program, Mrs. Stinson will present.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Oh, my goodness. Ready to go.
Except for my movement exercise.
I know, that's right. I'm like, oh, goodness, good evening.
I know, it's been a long meeting.
It's getting to be on the hour.
No. So first of all, the high school team did a great job. They looked at the data that was provided to them from Mrs. Elliott, as well as Ms. Peters. They, or here at Wilmington High, we have the great fortune of having Health Dynamics, which is a combination of physical education and health, offered to all of our ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. In their review of the programs of the other districts, some of the summaries that they found were that the physical education and health courses were taught completely separate. In districts also had very specific PE courses where students could sign up, for example, swimming and skating and sports and yoga. The, there are many districts who also utilize electives as a health-based, for their health education courses. And I do think that they also found that the ninth and 10th graders across all 30 communities have some sort of requirement for the freshmen and sophomores. And then in some instances, it turns to like the juniors and seniors having more of an elective-based. And then they have as well PE alternatives for students throughout the different grade levels. I think that we in Wilmington are extremely blessed and fortunate to provide all of our students in the high school levels one semester of physical education and health. Our current staffing is, as Ms. Peters referenced, we have four teachers of whom teach all the different grade levels. And in some cases, I know that some of their frustration comes from the fact that there might be in one section or one semester, they might have all four grade levels sometimes, but not excessive. And I think they, they've looked at maybe the potential to sort of teach, separate a little bit more just PE and health education. But in their research, the, you can see approximately half, and some of the referencing's Ashland, Belmont, Billerica, Marshfield, and Tewksbury also have a four-year requirement. And I personally obviously believe very strongly in that continuing as well as the Mass Law of physical education being taught to all students at all grades, pre-K through 12. The other school districts, Reading, North Reading, excuse me, Situate, Burlington, and Grafton also have a two-year wellness requirement for graduation. Hanover has just their one particular wellness course for their students and one semester of PE. of PE. And then something that we have not ever had conversation in the time that I've been in the district is offering varsity athletic sports as an alternative for, way of fulfilling a semester of PE and health. I feel that it's very strongly two different areas, and I think that the educational components with regards to being in PE and, and health education have their benefits, and I also then believe that the athletics have their particular role in the, in the life of a student in, in the high school as well. And one other quick comment, pre-COVID, all of our 10th grade students at Wilmington High School had the opportunity to participate and, and receive certification in CPR, and I would hope that we would continue to, to have that as part of our programming moving forward. I know it becomes a challenge to, to work all those students through and to get the children through the program, you know, in a, in a short amount of time or in a course amount of time, but I think that gaining that skill helps them not only in their everyday life, but it can in fact transfer over into their work-related fields that they might be moving into, whether some of them take life, you know, lifeguarding and go out to be a lifeguard. So I, I strongly recommend that we continue to support CPR for our students at Wilmington High School, whether it's specific back in our 10th grade programming or maybe back at, at whatever grade, but definitely, you know, at, at some point in their health and physical education course here. So, and I, I promise it's not good morning, I promise. I say it every morning, when, when the children are coming in, I'm like, good morning, hi boys and girls, good morning, and anyhow, I must be already thinking about me.
Ms. Brown?
I have a question about some of the curriculum. To what extent do the PE and health offerings incorporate mental health, stress management, all of that?
So, we are, I think last year and the year previous, the, the team, the high school team has really focused greatly on the social emotional components of the, the student's health. I think they were extremely pleased, and Ms. Peters can even maybe speak to some of this, they were extremely pleased with what sort of occurred in the COVID process, how they built a lot of new practices amongst their, their classes with regards to stress reduction, yoga, and, and really, really beginning to give the children, or give the students the opportunity to sort of reflect on their own social emotional health. I mean, I think that they, they believe that that would be something that they also would like to increase in their curriculum, and so that it becomes more of a, a daily part of what they're doing with their students. And, and Ms. Peters might have some more to add, but that would.
I know last year they did, because of the hybrid and remote situation, we had one physical education teacher that was fully remote, and she did mindfulness with all the students throughout the whole year. So they, they do spend a lot of time thinking about mental health and how they can help our students. A lot of the curriculum is, is, is based on that as well.
Do you feel like staff have had enough PE or training and how to sort of scaffold that into sort of what they already know?
Right, and I, I think that that would certainly be things that they, they're, they're in conversation with me. I met, in fact, last spring with a couple of the high school teachers with regards to ways to move the, the curriculum forward with some of that as well. I'm sure that any would welcome the opportunity to increase, you know, professional development in any of those skill sets, and I think they have, they do a lot independently. They really do, they take a lot of independent courses with dance as well as their yoga and things like that, so. But yes, I think we can certainly look to how to incorporate more of that for the children, for the students as well.
We do have a yoga club that meets 7:15 on Thursday mornings. If anyone's interested.
For the kids or the staff?
The kids and the staff, the kids start.
Is it well-attended? Do the kids go? Yeah, that's great.
There's the table tennis, too. I've heard that. My team, my high school teachers were like, what do you think, where are, we have two really old table tennis. Sounds exciting to me. They have four new tables, so they've got a collection of six, so they can, they're excited. It's great. And the students are really excited about it as well, so. I've had an opportunity to actually visually see it in my, in my teaching days, so, but.
Any other comments?
Stay tuned, as Julie said, more to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our counselors also have worked on looking at some program changes, and Ms. Dickerson is here to talk about them.
This is going to be a little bit different. I'm just looking at the role of our program in preparing our students to go off to college and thinking about how we evaluate them and how we prepare them to be evaluated by colleges. So we looked at our grade point average specifically, looked at all of the comparable districts. Out of 28 districts, 23 are using a standard 4.0 scale, which is, all of you are probably familiar with that, a 3.0 would be a B, a 2.0 would be a C. Our scale is a 4.3 scale, only one other district is using that right now. It is, it becomes, for lack of a better word, inflated the further down you go the scale. So a B is a 3.1 and a C is a 2.2. So that comparison is interesting when we prepare our students to go off to school, which you'll see in one of these later bullets here. We also looked at how schools are weighting coursework, so out of 24 districts with reported information about their weighting, 15 give an additional point for AP coursework, and when we talked to some of those districts, some of the thinking behind that was that the greater point difference makes students more willing to take on some more rigorous coursework because they feel like they're able to take a risk in their GPA without taking a hit. So, for example, if a student gets a B in an AP course at some of these schools, it's comparable to an A in a CP course, so they feel a little bit more comfortable being willing to take that risk or just persistent, of course, where they're not doing as well as they would like to do, but it's the same GPA-wise. We right now give a .6 for AP coursework, so it is a little bit different. Our, our, for lack of, without getting too complicated, our A- in an AP course is equivalent to an A+ in a CP course. So that difference is pretty small for students who are taking on the risk of an AP course. Some of them get a little bit stressed about seeing their GPA decrease if they go below that A-, because they feel like it's not giving them credit for the rigor of the coursework. We also looked at class rank, so this is much greater conversation later down the road, but out of 21 districts that do report their class rank, seven have eliminated class rank completely to decrease the competition of their student body. Many of them have changed to a decile rank where they're reporting to colleges whether their student is in the first, second, or third decile. Some of them are also keeping their top, for example, 10 student recognition, and they're valedictorian and salutatorian, so they're still acknowledging their top students, but they're removing rank for the remaining students. Generally, which, from a college standpoint, generally after you go past that first 10, which is obviously a great accomplishment for those students, and I wouldn't want to minimize that, but after that, it doesn't necessarily make a difference whether a student is 104 or 120 in the class. So some of that is to kind of take away that competition in the rest of the class. Out of 42 colleges that we surveyed, 40% set a standard 4.0 scale would make it easier for them to evaluate our applicants. So many colleges recalculate GPA anyway, so they're looking at our transcript and they're taking our grades and they're recalculating based on how they weight courses and how they give credit, for example, only core courses, some colleges do that. So for our scale, those that are recalculating said that if we were to change to a standard 4.0 scale, it would make it easier for them to evaluate our students because they're not recalculating to another scale. So that was just some of our kind of quick research. I don't know if anybody has any questions. It gets a little, you get in the weeds a little bit, it can be a little bit complicated, but I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has them. Yeah.
What is the rationale for using a 4.3 scale now? Why did we decide to do that?
Yeah, so unfortunately, the 4.3 scale predates me, so I'm not sure where I'm from. Generally, what you see is that schools that use a 4.0 scale, they give a 4.3 for an A+, so you're, you know, you're giving the credit for an A+ that like at a college level you don't have. So that's generally what we see when, when people think they're talking about a 4.3 scale, but here, the steps have been divided equally, so like I said, there's a difference the further down you go the scale, which makes it more difficult for our students to compare themselves to other high schools or at the college when they're trying to apply, and a college says our average GPA is a 3.5, it's difficult for our students to compare themselves to that. So unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that question, but I'm happy to answer any other question.
I think that some of what you've presented here, I think, shows the value of doing this exercise, because, I mean, I think you're previewing a little bit what some of your recommendations are going to be on January 19.
Yeah.
Repeated references to the risks students are taking to their GPA and being discouraged from taking advanced coursework and, and so forth. And sometimes, but you need, there needs to be a reason to evaluate and, you know, look, look fresh at what we're doing and decide whether this makes sense. It's like, that's why the, doing this on a somewhat regular basis is important, because you easily, you just do what you've been doing, everyone has more than enough work already, so without a specific reason and purpose, it just doesn't say like, you know what, maybe we should just change this, you know, it's like, but when you actually get a, a charge to evaluate this and look at what other schools are doing, it doesn't make sense for us to continue this, which, as you say, no one is quite sure why we did it in the first place. That sort of institutional knowledge is kind of lost to history, but now we have an opportunity to make a change. So I think it's a good, a good example of why we're doing this review in the first place.
All right, well, we look forward to January.
Thank you.
I know there's some next steps, but I think we are anxiously anticipating.
Thank you.
I just want to thank all of you, because you, you've gone above and beyond to do this outside of your normal jobs on a daily basis, and you're here tonight taking time out of your family time, so thank you.
Thank you.
There's some conclusion, some next step?
Well, just, just to echo what everybody else has said, first of all, I think you can all infer what is coming, January 19th, so some proposals, if you hadn't caught the foreshadowing earlier, but the, so we'll definitely be bringing those proposals forward based on this, and I wanted to just thank the CTLs and liaisons and department heads for their leadership in this work and for working with all, and to thank all of their colleagues as well for the work they did to pull this information together. It is really helpful, and I think some great points were brought up this evening around, you know, it's good to see what other districts are doing, but it's also good to celebrate what we're doing because there are places that we are, have gone above and beyond where other districts are, and we, you know, we think they should be looking at our program of studies to also see what they can be doing to improve. So kudos to the team for, for this work, and it's exciting to see what we'll be bringing forward.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate your time.
Thanks, everybody, and that is indeed a ticket to leave. Had a long day, so.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
And that brings us to item seven. Are you going somewhere? Like, are you leaving? I'm like, no, you're not.
I was gonna offer Melissa to get it for you.
Yeah, I would have.
Thank you so much.
We need to stand up.
You're closer to it.
Thank you.
We have our preliminary budget presentation.
Yes. Thank you so much. So item, item 6A, sorry, not item 6A, 7A, the preliminary budget presentation will be added to the packet for members of the community if you're tuning in and you want to follow along with this information. It's a pleasure to be able to deliver to you, really is a first look or a first glimpse at our preliminary 2022, 2023, that is to say fiscal year 23 budget for the Wilmington Public Schools. Tonight's presentation is the first of a number of presentations that will span the next few weeks, and actually, few months in fact, but as we seek to be on the path to finalize our budget plan, to present to you, to present to the community, and that we think will best allow us to operate our schools next year. This, this evening's presentation is really intended to be a high-level 20,000-foot view of the budget plan that's taking shape at this point in time, and as I'll mention, I think a few times throughout, it's preliminary, and it's called that for a reason. We still have work that is underway and reviews that are underway and tweaks and adjustments that may continue to unfold, so I think that's important to put that out there. I think it's important also to start with the fact that each budget, of course, is filled with numbers, but I think it's also undergirded by a story, right? And sometimes those two concepts don't necessarily go hand-in-hand for many, but I think it's important to underscore that. It is assembling a storyline that we think describes and provides a, an overview of context, if you will, to what we think are necessary from the fiscal resource standpoint to operate our, our district. The plan for next year really centers around a couple of key things. It is indeed certainly not an understatement to suggest that our planning still remains embroiled in, if you will, in, in challenging circumstances as we continue to make our way through, hopefully, the pandemic. It's clearly not going away, however, and the lingering impact on children and staff is real, and it continues for which we need to try and be mindful of. While we remain enmeshed in navigating the circumstances, we're also at the same time striving to return to or continue to focus on the important and good work around such things as our goals, initiatives, that are connected to our strategic, strategic plan. We won't get into too much of that tonight, but know that that will be certainly a focal point in the next more expanded budget presentation. Our operations continue to also include a degree of funding from other sources, that's not unusual. Grants are certainly a, a key component of our, like all districts' budget. We are thankful for these, and we'll, we'll certainly anticipate with this plan that they'll continue through next year, and where that is the case, this planning has included that as part of the consideration. As a broader form of context setting for this year, for, for next year, I'm sorry, of the FY '23 preliminary budget, it was shaped around the following in mind, and these may ring, or be reminiscent of other budget plans, but that's because they are, they're, they're a constant through line, but I think it's always important to pause and, and take, take note of them. We always start by identifying the fixed costs that we have for the overall obligations that we have to deliver the services and programs. We have a variety of legal mandates, as do all districts, that we're obligated to provide, and so we, we take those into consideration as the starting point. We will always continue to provide where and when possible, special education programming for our students in district. It's not always possible, as you know, but to the extent that that can be, it will be in, so we shape our planning accordingly. We also will continue to review, of course, our class sizes and sections, that is an important component of our, of our planning, and I'll talk a little bit more about enrollment in, in a few moments. There are a number of key things that are important to consider as priorities or prioritizing in the budget planning, in no particular order. I think we've captured most of these here. Of course, the funding for essential programs and services, those go far beyond just the classroom teacher in front of his or her students. There are many, many other services, of course, that we offer our students and for which they, they rely upon and, and require. We are, as mentioned earlier, trying to return to addressing some key areas of our strategic plan. We are looking to finalize in this, in this budget plan, really what we believe from, at least from a financial standpoint, is one of the last recommendations that came forth from the Walker Report a few years ago. And certainly, and, and again, no way not least, expanding the needs of social emotional well-being of our student body as we try and attend to those. There are a few assumptions, of course, always I think important to keep in mind as we are at this point in the year, December. as we are at this point in the year, December, almost 10 months away from, you know, effectively opening school, our school doors for next school year. It is that lengthy timeframe, again, almost 10 months out, that we are making assumptions that have certainly the reality that they can change between now and next year. So that's not to suggest that this is a best guess plan, but it's always important to know that things can change. Based upon our current projections, we are estimating just under 2,800 students in the school system. And again, I'll expand a little bit more about that in a moment around enrollment. We are always trying to take stock of our grants and the other contributions to program and services. And we do, again, rely upon those to offset costs. And we will build into the budget the, the financial contributions to support our transportation services. Again, as a school district, we are, we are user fee, user fee free, sorry, I did that not come out right, but for, for transportation services and for, not all, not all, but the majority of our extracurricular programming. We don't have fees as we tend to think of them in terms of other school districts. For example, athletic fees. All of those, all of those respective operational costs, most of those, let me rephrase that, operational costs are included in the budget. And those are sizable. And I think it's worthwhile to point that out. Enrollment and budget planning, a little bit of a deeper dive here in the next couple of slides. Just again, as, as important sort of points of order. We, we do have contractual requirements. I say this more for our committee, our community members. I know that the committee is aware of this. We have certain obligations in which we have to shape our, our class sizes and our pupil teacher ratios around which we, we, we plan. And so when we go about section planning, particularly at the pre-K to eight level or pre-K to five, or K to five level, that's really where we see the shapes taking form with the enrollment predictions that we're making. Talked about this previously, certainly at the middle school and high school level that is more complex. It's not as linear, if you will. We are, we are, of course, as you know, in the process of working at, focusing in on that and exploring where there might be opportunities to adjust. The, a lot of numbers, I know, and they're smaller, but I, I think if, if one is looking at this, it certainly comes across better. But this is a, a landscape view of what our current, our current enrollment looks like throughout the district. We have, again, around approximately 2,800 students and just slightly over 50 out of district students currently. For those that are interested in trends and fluctuations over time, obviously, of a lot of numbers here, but that provides a historical view culminating down the bottom and where we're at, where we're at right now. And then we get into a little bit more of the numbers in the, the remaining slides here. Again, 20,000-foot view, so we intentionally don't go much deeper than that. But you can see an overview here of, from the personnel standpoint, the comparisons from this fiscal year to next, as it currently stands. You will see here that as of this moment in time, I want to underscore that that could change in the next number of weeks. Our current preliminary plan is to increase our staffing by just over one FTE. We, again, though, continue to review the numbers and will refine as we, as we think we need to, based upon the information that we have. As is always the case, the total staffing levels don't directly correlate to enrollment. This is an important thing that I, I know is easy to get lost in taking a look at numbers and honing in on, well, if your enrollment is going in one direction, shouldn't your staffing be going in that same direction? And that's a far more complicated story that doesn't always play itself out that way. And I absolutely would say that that's our reality. I would, I would hazard a guess that's the case for probably many. There are complex and changing student needs that can often necessitate a broader array of services and staffing. And we'll plan to expand upon that storyline in our next budget presentations in later January. So salary changes are, of course, closely tied to that information, personnel. And the aforementioned personnel counts that you saw roll up into what amounts to total salary changes. This slide here provides a, again, a high-level overview of the various adjustments that are necessary to maintain our staffing, to open our doors in, in the fall and, and, and keep, keep in place the staffing that this identifies. And you can see that breakdown, steps and lanes, salary increases, longevity, all those, all those related salary changes. While we remain, of course, a people-driven business with the majority of our operations going toward, in our, in our budget, going towards our staff, the fact is that we are a multi, a million-dollar operation that holds fundamental obligations to provide a wide array of infrastructure, supplies, technology, many, many other things. This all rolls up as what is entitled non-salary changes. But collectively, again, no small fiscal resource necessary to operate our district with all of the other aspects to it. And that comes close to $9.5 million. Obviously, a significant amount of fiscal resources required. As you'll note here, I think it's important to, to take stock of. We've, we've really tried hard to keep this budget line as flat as possible. Some of these things don't necessarily need to, need to be adjusted and it's, it's just perhaps a inflationary value that drives those increases. In other cases, there may be desired increases for supplies or materials, but we've, we've tried to, to press on those, if you will, to keep those collectively as, as, as flat as possible. Here's an overview of sort of budget-to-budget view and what that looks like with those two broad categories of salary and non-salary. You can see the, again, we're in fiscal year '22, of course, and how that compares to what is currently being planned for fiscal year '23. You can see the roll-up for the changes, both in terms of dollar value and percent. And right now, as you can see there, just a little over 3% increase with the current budget plan here, preliminary as it is. And obviously, a little over $1.3 million right now. Aside from the various staffing and non-personnel, personnel items, sorry, that are included in any budget plan, there's also a separate, but really a very important category of capital requests that we annually submit to the town, and this year has been no exception. As always, this is not a, a different form, but I'm not sure if it's that we're asked or we, we work within what the town prefers, which I think makes total sense. And that is over a five-year view, a five-year plan. And so you can see here what the, the current submissions are that we, we put forth. As is always, or as is often the case, an awful lot of these revolve around technology or related items, and you can see that here. You can see the special education vans is, is really the exception. Mr. Lord works diligently with Rogerio on putting this together, and you can see the overview. This does change from year to year sometimes. New and, you know, otherwise unidentified needs at this point in time might emerge over the next, next 12 months. And so sometimes you can see some variations. But this gives you a sense and the community sense of what we're planning right now, what we think our replacement needs are over time for those items that fall into the capital category. And there's an actual specific general law definition for, for what those amount to. And so in, in summary here, first, to extend my thanks to all of our department and school leaders, many of them were here, obviously, earlier tonight, but also all our, our school principals and program leaders for their diligence in putting together their best thoughts and ideas on a budget plan that, again, as I've said, at this point in time is, is, is early. But based upon the information that they have before them, that they believe that they can sustain our programs and services as a school district going forward to next year. We are striving with this plan to support our necessary, necessary operations while trying to balance the delivery of a fiscal, fiscally conservative budget proposal to this committee and ultimately the citizens of the town. We intend to flush out a greater focus on some of the priorities that have been touched upon here briefly and, and some of the deeper storylines around, for example, some of the staffing at the next presentation. And we are, in so doing, trying to commit to expanding our, our services and what we can provide for the students of Wilmington. And finally, again, to state, we'll continue over the next coming weeks, before we're back to you, to review the budget, make adjustments as we think are appropriate and bring, bring that next pass, if you will, to you in, in not that many weeks down the road. Next steps for where we sit right now, later this week, Friday, we are, the administration is meeting with the town manager to get a better sense at where he sees the financial picture to, to be and where it's unfolding from his vantage point right now. That's, of course, a very important step for us to understand that context. We have, right now, scheduled for January 19th, the recommended budget presentation for fiscal year '23 coming before you as a committee. And then in February, we're looking at a possible date adjustment, I think, from the original school committee calendar. So that's a, that's a tentative there, but February 16th to have the, to hold the fiscal year '23 public budget hearing. The final step in the process, at least the final step within the, the committee as a whole, and as you know, there's more steps to come at the town level. But with that, that, that's the, that's the overview. I'm certainly happy to ask, answer any questions if you have any.
Mrs. Burns?
So I, I had a couple and I'll just, I'll try to sprinkle out so I don't take up the floor. But so I remember we, transportation is a big area of concern for a variety of reasons. Have we expired the five, I think it was a five-year contract with North Reading? Paul, where, where do we sit with that and have we recently negotiated it or in the past? I mean, I'm a little thrown off the timeline.
So we initially had a, we went to town meeting to request the ability to go to a five-year contract with approved. So this current fiscal year is the first year of one of the option years.
Okay.
FY '23 would be the second year of the two option years, if you will.
Okay.
So the plan is to exercise that option. It's about a 2.7% increase over this current fiscal year. And I've seen out there some districts who said they've been seeing up to, you know, almost a 20% increase from year to year. So that's the goal, that's what's in here. And then during next school year, if you will, we'll be going out to bid. That'll be the end of that, right? Fifth year.
Very good. Thank you, I appreciate that. My question, as it pertains, I, January 19th is going to be a pretty, it's going to be a pretty significant meeting just between the, the program recommendations from the high school along with the budget, a recommended budget presentation. I think those are pretty significant agenda items to tackle. But in saying that and in thinking about just the overall start to this discussion, enrollment, I know there's a, there's a lot of building taking place with apartments and such in Wilmington, projects that will be becoming active. I worry about, I don't want to catch ourselves off. I don't want to be, what's the word I'm looking for? Caught off guard, I guess, if we have a surge like we did several, maybe a, I don't know if it was a decade ago, but a decade ago of new residents coming in requiring, you know, with school-aged children to those apartments. I know this one in North Wilmington, I think this one near Yount Farms going up. I just want to make sure that, you know, that in, I, I know the forecast, there's a method, methodology that you guys look at to predict enrollment. But that's, that can be, as I've seen, that can sometimes go awry. With the programming that was discussed, the, just the oversight that was presented to us earlier, is it fair to say that some of the, the new programming that we're looking into getting into, with that, the number of programs, I guess, would be merit on the number of students we have per grade, correct? And if so, that would, would that prohibit us or handicap us, you know, speculatively in curating the amount of programs or the change of programming that we, we want to go forward with if enrollment? I mean, I don't know if I'm articulating it the way that I, I want to. But what's, I guess, maybe the, the best way of asking the question is, how big of an impact would enrollment have in the creation of new programming at the high school? I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, I'll take a pass and my colleague can certainly jump in. So, you know, to, to reiterate, there's, the, the two aspects that we're taking a look at, the middle school program review, that is also one of my goals, and, and the high school program review. You know, really, from a foundational standpoint, the essence there was to best understand what the, the ideal programming looks like or program looks like and what that might require from a staffing standpoint, how we, how we might be able to operate with staffing levels prior to making any full-scale adjustments for, for our staffing. And in other words, it, to me, would not seem to be wise to try and just attach any kind of reduction to a number with our current high school staffing, using that as an example, before understanding what idealistically any new programming might need to be that's brought online, what programming that may exist that may be undersubscribed and that we could possibly think about phasing out and repurposing resources, to best understand what our overall program needs are, what the staffing needs are, then in turn to operate that, and then to back into possible, you know, staffing adjustments. So that's, that's what I think is most, is most key and most important. For, as it relates to enrollment in particular, we, we've talked about this, obviously, at length here and will for some time. You know, we, we don't know how many students are going to be coming from year to year at the ninth grade level until well after this budget passes. And that's a reality that is challenging to deal with in the sense of making hard-scale predictions, you know. And I think that collectively, as a committee and administration, we're understandably facing. Just because there was a, a certain number of students that did or did not come to the high school last year from the eighth to ninth grade does not mean that it's going to reflect what could be the case next year. So it's a, I guess, a long way of saying, I think we need to be cautious and, and careful, thorough in our, in our planning and assessment before making any grander changes for enrollment.
I was just thinking of it as, from the financial budgetary piece with the money following the student in, in enrollment and funding. And then the ability to take action on whatever recommendations or find the right pathway. It always has a money line attached to it, I guess, is what I'm trying to, trying to clarify. Probably not doing so great, but I, you know, I, I think this, I think this review with the programming and seeing how other districts, what other districts offer compared to Wilmington and how we can bolster ours or, you know, find out where we might be able to enrich or enhance our programming. I just want to make sure that there's that financial backing and that need through, you know, student-driven want to create, to, you know, to meet your, the goals that you've set. And so I just, and I guess maybe I'm, again, a cart before the horse kind of perspective here that I just, I don't want that to prohibit going forward and making those enhancements. And we may have to prioritize, which I think is probably the, the name of the game, as to which ones move forward at what timeframes. But I just don't want it to be prohibitive in offering, you know, in offering programming that could really benefit and enrich our students and our high school. So I guess if I'm saying that clearly the wrong way around, sorry.
I guess one of my questions is, first of all, thank you for this presentation. It's very, it's very helpful. The, the 3.09% change, how does that compare to changes from the other years?
Last year, in the FY '22 budget, we were a 2.5% increase. So it's been anywhere between So it's been anywhere between, at the end of the day, three to two and a quarter, two to three, in that area. At this time, this is probably, we've come to this school committee meeting with a preliminary budget up to almost 6% higher than budget. And then, as the superintendent mentioned, we meet with the town manager and see what the town can support and so forth, and we go back and forth. So in this preliminary budget, I think we've done a good job of putting in, right now, what we think we really need to run the, to run the school district going forward. There will be changes, and I think we'll be able to deal with, depending, to deal with them, but we'll know when we meet Friday, and then kind of, you know, go from there, both on the capital and the operating side.
So you would characterize this as pretty much on par with years past, there's nothing that seemed?
Yeah, nothing out of the ordinary, although we are a little bit lower percentage increase at this time compared to previous years. As I mentioned, one year in particular, I think we were 5.6% budget to budget. During the preliminary budget, that we had to get down to maybe a 3% and so forth, which took a little bit of work for us in the central office, along with the department heads and the principals. So, yeah, I think we have been here right now, we're in a good spot. I think.
I just have a kind of a re-centering question. What exactly are you hoping we will do right now? Like, so, for example, I want to know, thinking about the buses, the transportation. So I'm gonna be looking at this in January, which is pretty much all, at that point, really almost finished, essentially, right? So if I want to push on something, right, is now the time to do that? Where if I'm like, ooh, do we need all these buses? Can we figure out if those buses are full or not? Is that, this, should I be doing that right now, or if I wait until January, is that too late? Can you just help, I mean, we have, because this is Plowman's new, like, I just want to make sure we're all asking the right questions. I don't want to get to January and then sit there and be like, oh, but wait, I wanted, I wanted to know more about transportation, or I want to talk more about the fees for the co-ops because I, families are not, family, new families to the co-ops are not happy because they weren't a part of that conversation, like, as Jay has brought up at least two times now. What's happening with the swim fee? What's happening with the swim fee? When, when should we ask those sorts of questions? Is that right now? Is that most helpful for you?
You can answer, I mean, you can ask those questions.
I can't answer them, that's why. Why would I answer them?
Wish you would.
There currently is money in the budget for the swim co-op.
Okay.
So that is in the athletic budget.
Okay.
So yes.
So yes, so you want us to ask those sorts of things, right now?
So, right, so I think that the key would be in framing that is, is there an area of interest that as a committee you have that you want the administration to consider, right? This budget proposal is relatively speaking, with the exception of a determined staffing adjustment, a status quo, I'll use the term "level services" budget. So there's been, there's no, there's no change in service from what we're currently operating. And I would not define a change in level service as an adjustment in class, total number of sections, say, at the elementary level. That's a level service, we're making adjustments due to what we think is a swing in enrollment. But all other services, to use that broad term, are status quo within this budget, this budget proposal before you right now. So if there is something that as a committee you are interested in or have a desire for the administration to look at, to reconsider, now would be the time.
Okay, thank you. And so, so can I put that transportation as a, so I would like an update on that, just to know that we're, do we have too many buses? I mean, this is just, are there too many buses running? Can we cut the cost there a little bit, or no? Should we talk more deeply about that? So that's something I'd like to know. I'm glad to hear the swim fee will be included. I know we have another co-op, is that going to be included? I think these are questions that people are gonna be asking. And thinking back to our finance committee meeting, they're gonna want to know really about enrollment. So what are we doing with the budget in terms of enrollment? And is it going to, if it's looking exactly the same, are we doing the research necessary to support that? So I want to be prepared for that meeting coming up.
Understood, but let me, if I can, expand on that. So to go to the enrollment, because obviously, it's the big piece. So thinking to the conversation that we had, and collectively with the contributions or thoughts of some members of the committee here, let's shift. We're talking an awful lot about the high school for a moment, let's shift to the middle school for a moment. What I'm operating on, or operating with, is an understanding from you as a committee is before we are going to make any more significant adjustments to the staffing model there, I'm completing the program review. That program review is not on course to be completed by the time this budget is. So hence, it is not my intention, unless we think that there are staffing adjustments that can be made that don't play into the larger design, that's not gonna be in sync, if you will, with this budget proposal. Similarly, with the high school, if we think that there can be an adjustment from a staffing standpoint that is minor, I guess I would characterize, then we will certainly bring that forward. But there is not an intent to reshape, if you will, or a larger, grander change, because this won't be, this won't be completed by the budget cycle, it's the way that's synchronized. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, thank you.
And if I could just add to that, we did look at elementary enrollment, which is much different, much easier. So we did adjust, and you saw some of those numbers. We did make adjustments and stay within the contractual limitations or obligations.
So, go to David first, is that okay? Please.
So I want to ask about the enrollment projections. So it looks like we're projecting about 100 fewer students next year than we currently have. And can you talk about how we came to that projection?
Sure, what we do in this model is a three-year cohort averaging model, if you will. So it looks at, for instance, grade one, how can I explain this? So if I look at, as an example, grade one FY '22 enrollment divided by FY '21 kindergarten enrollment. So it looks at the retention rate of students. So going from kindergarten to first grade, first to second, second to third, and so forth. And it does a three-year averaging of that, and we get a percentage. So we take that percentage times the number of students in, as an example, one FY '22, the number of students times that retention rate, we'll say, okay, that's how many students we'll retain in the next fiscal year, in the next grade level. I don't know if that made sense or not. If, so if I look at, let's say, eighth grade, the survival rate in the eighth grade is about 96%, the three-year average. So that means seventh graders moving to eighth grade, 96% of the seventh graders moved to eighth grade. So then, when you project, we take the current seventh grade enrollment times the 96%, and that's how we project next year's eighth grade. So it's using a three-year cohort averaging times, and using that percentage for retention rate for the kids going up a grade the next fiscal year.
Okay, now, that average is gonna be hugely weighted by the 2020-21 school year, in which, you know, we lost several hundred students. Is that gonna throw the projection off to some extent? I mean, that's a, that's a very, I mean, obviously, we, you know, we've been losing enrollment steadily. We've talked about this, you know, several, many times. But that, of course, was an anomalous year in that regard. And so is there any way to sort of adjust for that in making the projection going forward?
Two things, if I could, on that. We really didn't see the kids coming back in '22. We did lose from '21 compared to '20, but we didn't see them come back in '22. And I think even throughout the state, the part, the enrollment did not come back. And I think nationwide to pre-pandemic levels. We did have a meeting today, which was interesting, because we asked that same question with the MSBA. We had a, and Dr. Bryson was on the call, too, and we asked that same question, because they do a five-year cohort average for their projections. And this is for the Wildwood Project. And we asked that question, you, they included, I think, FY '17 to '21, or '22 in their projections. And we asked the question, we have '21 in there, that's an anomaly, we thought. And they really said it really wasn't, because we didn't, you know, the students didn't come back in '22. It wasn't a big change.
Right, they didn't, I mean, they didn't come back, but we're not gonna see a drop in students that large in just any ordinary year to year. I mean, that was a special circumstance.
Right.
So I think that that would, I think that would, you know, mixing, basically, I think it just threw, you know, it's an anomalous event to some, because I think it's gonna throw off the projection to some degree. But actually, let me just move to another, to just a connected topic here. So last year, when we were building the FY '22 budget, we explicitly said that, look, we don't really know what's gonna happen next year. Again, this is, you know, we've lost a lot of students, but, you know, we have to at least assume, we don't want to be, you know, caught without the resources to educate them if they come back. And no one really knew whether students would be returning to schools that they left. Like you said, there were, like, you know, almost 40,000 students lost in Massachusetts Public Schools last year. And then they didn't come back. In fact, we lost a few, you know, we lost some additional students this year. The enrollment went down again, rather than going up. So that we, you know, in this current year, are educating about 370 fewer students than we budgeted for when we did the fiscal, the FY '22 budget. So is that reflected, in the sense like that excess, reflected in how we're moving forward and projecting our increase from this year to next year?
The, when you, so the enrollment, so last year, when we did the enrollment, we made an assumption that some of the kids would come back. In this model, we went with the actual numbers for '21 and for '22. So as far as staffing goes, we really didn't, we'd adjusted staffing in 20, in the FY, in this current fiscal year's budget, based on our projections of where we thought enrollment compared to staffing would be. And then we look at it again in '23 with moving the, essentially, 100% of the students in the analysis we do, and we've taken that into account as well. So we have taken into account staffing, more at the elementary level, not at the middle school.
Right, because what Dr. Brand mentioned, as far as completing the, completing the program reviews. I guess, and this goes a little bit to what Ms. Burns was asking about the, you know, the, sorry, the comparable increase. Actually, I think it was Jake who asked it, about like, you know, the percentage, like, is this a comparable percentage? Because I remember previous years, at this stage, we were often at like 4%, 4.5%. And I think coming in at this 3%, I had the sense that that might be the reason that the increase is not as great at this stage as it has been in the past, is because we had that sort of, you know, assumption that did not carry through as far as what we were budgeting for, for this year. And so, you know, going from this year to next year, you know, to get ourselves in an appropriate place that we don't need quite the same increase that we have had in past years.
And every year's a little different, depending on who retires, or who may resign, and replacements that we bring in for those positions and so forth. That has some bearing as well. But, yeah, I think we kind of take into account everything that's happened over the last couple of years in this FY '23 budget.
Thank you.
This is, it's a little bit different direction with this question, but do you think you could provide, like, an example or two of some, some kids? Like, you mentioned in the show, there are some key areas and priorities that this budget focuses on from the strategic plan. What are some of those areas, like, an example of the budget focusing on the strategic plan?
Christine can chime in, but we, again, in this plan, as we have had the last two years, have an allocation, excuse me, have an allocation towards supporting strategic plan-related initiatives, if you will. So when you see the more expansive budget breakdown, you will see that as part of the budget line. Right now, one example in there that ties the strategic plan is around the support for equity and inclusion. So we've factored in there, into that budget line, our partnership, which we didn't last year, a year ago, have knowledge of at that point in time, our partnership with Seem Collaborative. So that's, that's a, that's one of the items. Others?
Just continued purchases of different assessment tools and instructional tools that align with the strategic priority number one. So continuing to grow that, the assessment tools for universal screening, and expanding that into the middle school level. Trying to see. Within professional development, certainly, addressing multiple areas of the plan as well.
Thank you.
Burns, I think I saw hands over there.
I'm gonna defer, thank you.
Okay. No, I'm not gonna, I'm not seeing it specifically, but I would also be curious, having just heard from Anita Delulo, would there, is there something going in this budget to provide some additional support for that department? Unlike athletics, that has its full, art and music doesn't, I mean, it's here, it's pieced in, but it's hard for me to see where art and music, sort of overall, like, what that, I mean, I would love at some point, I guess, to sort of, this is the art and music budget, you know, I don't, we don't have that. So it's all pieced in, in the schools, and so it's hard to sort of get a sense of how much we are spending in that area, because I have to sort of look through all. And so I'm not saying to do this for now, but I'm saying, if this is going to be a priority, and this is something we're prioritizing, and families are, you know, we do talk about this, no fee, you and I have had this conversation many a time, there is quite a large fee if you rent an instrument or buy an instrument. And so if families are engaging and really committing to that, and I'd love to be able to see how our budget supports that in the same way that athletics does. But, so like, my big, my big ask here is, are we gonna provide some additional support for band and strings in this, in the '23 budget? You don't have to answer that right now, but I would be very happy to see something on that request.
Yeah, sure, and we can, we can provide, we can certainly provide more context for that. Without getting too deep into the weeds on this, though, I just, I can comment briefly on the, following up to her comment around the shared staffing. So there is no, there is no plan at the present time in this, in this budget plan to expand, to expand staffing in that area. It is a constant strain, and I know it well, and it's not common that we have, as you heard earlier, the shared staffing within that, at least that department. And that holds true, I think, for, well, it does for some of our other staff, too. I would say that that reality for us is somewhat challenging based upon a couple of things. The number of, the number of schools doesn't help. And the, let me, let me just use you for, share one example for you. So with schools of two grades, we obviously want to offer art, and we want to offer physical education and so many other subjects. But those grades don't require a full-time teacher. So they would have, if we just had a full-time art teacher, right? So hence, because of that, we have to stretch and pull them to cover multiple buildings, multiple programs. And so it's not ideal in any means. And I'm not sure if, to the degree that we're stretched thin, I don't doubt it. But we can certainly provide, from a fiscal standpoint, as well as a staffing standpoint, if you want that insight, that's something, of course, we can provide. And I had, just back, if I can, to go to your transportation question and the other. I mean, that's, you know, some of that information, we have certainly that information. If that's information that you want to have, we have this slated for the second meeting in January, obviously. If there's specific information that you'd like ahead of time, it would be good to know that. Ahead of time, meaning the first meeting in January. And I'm thinking about the transportation.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's something that we can certainly provide. You know, it's something that we can certainly provide.
Great. So I would definitely request that. And then I would, I would really love to just have a sense of this, I'm thinking specifically about the sort of the high school orchestra, and what kind of, what that schedule looks like, actually, for, for that particular teacher. I'm just, I'm more out of curiosity, but I'm just curious to know how much time students are getting at these different levels with this practice. I just would love to have a better sense of that, because it's a, it's a, it's an awful big commitment, I think, that children and families are making. And I want to make sure they're getting, you know, an equal, some equal time when it comes to that. And they may be, I don't know for sure. My only experience is with my one child. I have one child who does strings and one child who does band. And so I have that experience, but I don't have a vast, you know, experience as it goes there, so.
So I will say on that, so the budget requests that Mr. Lulio submitted to us have all been incorporated in the budgets. We made no changes to what she had requested. She did request a non-cost item that will kind of, it's more of a scheduling and so forth, is to bring the music down to the pre-K level without adding staff or any cost. So just to give you an idea, that with her current staffing, that was a request for her to bring music down to the pre-K level as well. So whatever she's asked for, just so you know.
Yeah, 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 no, that's helpful.
It's included in the budget. And back, you know, quite a few years ago, Superintendent Benton at the time had provided them with an incremental, I think it was $12,000, to help defray some of the costs for performances and so forth. And that was going to be for a couple of years. We kept it for more than a couple of years. And Mr. Lulio, her credits pared that down, because they don't really need it as much. So I just want you to be aware that whatever she asked for has been included in the budget. And the, bringing it down to the pre-K, it's a non-cost item, but it's more of a scheduling and so forth, to make sure the pre-Ks can handle it. So just so you're aware of that.
Okay, thank you. I'm just thinking about her comment, as far as, we don't offer these things, because we literally have three members. So I'm like, oh, yeah, well, how can we offer all of these courses if we only have, because they're so busy with the performance piece, right? I mean, how could they possibly offer our courses?
But that's not to, I know it's getting late, I'm sorry. But that's, I think, just to jump off that, that's a prime example of the, and I know you understand it, but just for the community, the larger whole here, what we're aiming at. If a program recommendation comes forth, just a hypothetical of the music department, and there really is a strong desire to bring online additional courses, because we don't offer them, that will therefore require additional staffing. And that may be staffing that either we perhaps can identify and capture and repurpose within the existing high school staff, right? If we determine that we might have some capacity in one of the departments. I'm not saying we do, but if we do. And if we don't, then we have to think about how we're going to get at that from a budgetary standpoint. I think that's a great example of trying to be a little, for patient a little bit longer until we can get through this next phase, and then take a broader view of that. And music probably from tonight in the discussion here is the greatest example that I think we have before us.
Well, I think, if, too, if, depending on what the recommendations are that are presented in January in the visual arts area, that's equipment, that's going to be a significant investment. So that's, you know, again, that's, that's a, right, an example where we may have staff that may be able to teach that, and that's great. But the cost of this technology, as we know, as we've been onboarding Chromebooks and technology into our schools over the past 10 years that I've sat here, it's a cylindrical cycle, you know? And so that's an additional, you know, I think, I want to look at the tomorrow, but we can't lose sight about the future down the road and the pathway, you know? I don't want to be too sure. I think we're in a good spot, and I think the plan of action is a very solid one, and I think a very financially prudent one in reviewing programming. And then from that, we'll answer a lot of our questions with regards to how we're going to move forward with, you know, with staffing and program development, and as well as tapping that enrollment piece, and how, if that's, that's going to lay the groundwork for all those questions, and then the pathway for the next several years. So I just, you know, because I think, you know, I am concerned, because over the past, you know, several years, you know, the STEM areas are really been driven in so many facets of education. And I still, and, you know, and it's sad, because with the National Honor Society, usually here where the kids are moving on, the seniors are moving on to, and what fields they're going into. And I've noticed that a lot of them have been, not all of them, but a lot of them have been in a STEM-related field. And I think, I think that's great, you know? And I think that speaks to the encouragement and the, the word I'm looking for, but being impassioned by what they're learning in the classroom, you know, is guiding their goals for their future. And that's, I think that's, as we get there, I'm not going to worry my head about it right this minute, because I'm going to hyper-ventilate anything about the money costs associated with that. Paul may have to go back to a W.B. Mason briefcase, but, but, yeah. But I, you know, I think it's reasonable. I do would like to say, I think a lot of the questions that I develop around the budget season, though, is seeing what the school's wish lists are. And I absolutely recognize the rationale behind not making that request this year. I think that's, that's fine. But I think that is, for me, in seeing what that looks like within each of the schools is helpful in the development of, you know, the budget and asking questions. But, you know, I, that's all I wanted to contribute, but thank you.
Okay, and then, oh, sorry, and then David and then Jesse.
Sure.
Absolutely.
This isn't necessarily a question, but it's just, it's sort of, kind of, Jen, what you were saying, too, is it's making me think that we should be, as a committee, we should be having conversations around what are our budget priorities sometime in the fall before we get to this point? So I'm just thinking, going forward, I think that would make a lot of sense, to have that, like, public discussion. And I think that would help creating the, you know, the budget. You know what I mean? If they knew what our priorities were. You know, rather than saying, hey, can you do?
Right, a month before, hey, I'd like this and that, yeah, no, I hear you. That's a great suggestion, Jay. You know, organize that subcommittee. Other requests and, yes?
I hadn't actually thought of that, but I think that's, I think that's a terrific idea, so I'm going to.
You guys are the chair and the co-chair.
I'm going to second what Jay just said. My question briefly is more just procedural, right? So town meeting manager is this Friday. We meet as a committee again on the 19th to go over this. Do we have a sense of when, as a committee, we'll receive the recommendation from your team? And I say that because, right, generally, we get the packet on the Friday before a meeting, and that's sufficient time to go through it. But Friday before the budget meeting, if my recollection serves from last year, might have been almost cutting it a little close. So I just, I guess I was wondering or hoping that maybe this would be done. And I know there's a holiday, and so I apologize, but if this was done a little bit prior to that Friday, or if you had a sense or a deadline, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, well, then, yeah, that'll be my goal. Just, there is a bit of work putting the model together, so I just need the adequate time to everything to flow through and so forth. But I'll shoot to have the package similar to what you had, what you saw tonight electronically earlier than the 12th or the 14th or whatever. That'll be my goal.
Thank you, Paul. Sorry, no pressure. Thank you.
I just want to throw out, and it's not directly connected to the budget, but it does potentially have some fiscal impact, is just that we might want to give more consideration this year than I think we usually do to school choice. Every year, we tend to say, like, oh, things are in flex, or we don't have capacity, and it's a commitment to students. And, you know, we somewhat, I think summarily, kind of just say, no, we're not going to participate. And I think that maybe this year, it's something worth giving a little more consideration to whether we would accept school choice students, because I think we have the, have the space.
Either. Just to piggyback. So I don't know the positives and negatives of that, but I think opening it up to any staff member and their children, I think, may be a nice segue into that discussion. I don't know if that's a possibility or not. It's something that I would, you know, I mean, I know there's been some discussion. Not a lot that has recently come to my ears. But I, you know, I just, I would like to, you know, at least if that, if the board does discuss that and that's an avenue to pursue, I would, I would like to at least open it up to staff first. I think that, well, that would automatically probably encompass that in that area, but.
We can, that's insightful to know or helpful to know. We certainly, if that, you know, that comes at a later date, but certainly can and should then gather additional information relative to the law and the implications of that, so that as a committee, you can make an informed choice, one way or the other, on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments or requests? I just wanted to, I did want to mention our highlight, our out-of-district placements are down. Is that correct? I mean, I think that's something that, I think it was brought up at the finance, and I was like, that's, I mean, that's, that's good. I mean, that's a response to the Walker report, and that means that things are moving along well in some areas. And I don't, it kind of just, we just glossed over it, but I think that is something that we probably should discuss at some point.
I think it's a great point. We don't have to go into detail on that, but that is, that is true, number one, over the year, the last few years. And number two, you know, that's also another example where sometimes, not always, but sometimes that does retain students in district. Sometimes it does require some additional resources. And sometimes those go hand in hand. And so that's, the aggregate, or, you know, can get lost in the overall view. But it is a really important point that we should be, you know, feeling very good about as a school community. I'll just say the final point, maybe, on the whole budget, and there's been, I think, some really good discussions here. You know, as an administration, we will model what we've done in the recent past, if it seems to work, and if it seems to be sort of a good fit and right size and flow and sequence and so on for this. The idea of budget priorities, one and others. You know, as we go through this process, it certainly is going to be helpful for us if there's an adjustment to the approach, an adjustment to the information or timing, you know? As you know, when we get to this point in the year, there are some markers that we have to hit to feed this, or to get this budget through you as a committee and then to the town. So there's, but certainly, you know, please keep notes, please take notes, because if there's things that you think can be an improvement for the process in future years and adjustments, it's something that, you know, we can and should talk about, you know, sooner than later, so we can be thinking ahead to the next cycle. We don't have to go into that now, but.
If I can quickly add on to that. I want to say that the level of detail and depth that the main budget presentation, or the actual recommended budget presentation, went into last year is what I would like to see again this year. I thought that that was exactly the, you know, appropriate level of, you know, not every single number. But we really got, I think, some deeper insight into the budget at that level of detail than we have in previous years.
And it will be that same intent that we'll have to build that next budget presentation.
Great. This is good. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Sorry, am I still running? I've written all over my agenda. Let's see. Any subcommittee reports? Mr. Samaha, I know you have one.
Yeah, I don't, well, yeah, it's not necessarily a report, but I just wanted to update. I know in the last meeting for the Equity Subcommittee, I know that people, members had asked us to provide them some more information about the Equity Audit. And I just wanted to let people know that we had, we had originally scheduled to meet beforehand tonight. We ended up feeling that, well, first of all, like, this Equity Audit is something I think that we feel is really important. And there also is a substantial cost associated with that. And sort of as a collective, we, I think we've decided that we want to make sure that we can provide the committee with the best information possible. And so we're still gathering some of this information. And we could give you sort of a half-story, but instead of doing that, we want to make sure we have everything, you know, together, just because of the weight, of the, you know, the weight meaning the importance, and the cost of doing it, of doing the audit. So our hope is that by our next meeting, we will have a lot more information to provide with, to provide the committee with.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other subcommittee reports? Correspondence?
None this evening.
Your school committee dates, January 12th is a regular session meeting, January 19th, and then January 24th is the town manager's FY '23 budget presentation at 7:00 o'clock at Town Hall. All right. If there's nothing else, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thanks, everyone. Good night.